What you have on the formal agenda for tonight is just an MOU in relationship to how the city will, the administration will interact with the CSB Board between now and July 1st, which is the target date for the CSB to come into the city. I will say, and then I'll turn it over to Reverend Bryan, but I will say that the transition, we have about 15 teams that are working together and it's been exceptional in terms of the collaboration and the cooperation. We're finding out the good things, we're finding opportunities even as we go through this transition period. There are really four major points in the MOU that you'll approve tonight hopefully. Is that basically, it's a statement that indicates that we're going to act with full and open cooperation that's occurring. What's more important is that we, in this ordinance, or in this MOU, what's happening is the administration, the CSB Board, and the Attorney's Office are working on a series of ordinances that would allow for a smooth transition in beginning July 1. And with that said, the CSB will, the goal is for it to be a standalone department. Also, what this MOU does, it allows me or my designee to be the single overall person in charge of handling the transition between now and July 1. And also, to the extent possible, it allows us to start to begin to integrate systems now. What's interesting is that many systems are already integrated, whether it's human resources, finance, or even information technology. And I think the most important piece is that this last statement is that even now, we're beginning to integrate the FY 20, we'll say it differently when we prepare, for the FY 2013 budget. So the last thing we want to do is have one organization that's working on one track in terms of what funding needs are beginning July 1, and another organization being on a different track. So there are a number of folks, both from the CSB side and the administration, that have done a great job. And again, I commend Ann Odell, who is my point in terms of the CSB, as well as Winter Bendah, who's been providing the oversight for the transition. So that's really from the administrative standpoint. And Reverend Bryan, if there's anything that...
Thanks, council members. Just wanted to give you a perspective from the NCSB's Board as to how the transition is going, and we think it's going great. And you've already acknowledged Winter, who's heading the transition up for your office, and Ann Odell, and they're doing a great job. Jack Powell in the City Attorney's Office has been a great resource. From our standpoint, the organization, and from the Board of Director's standpoint, things couldn't be going better as far as the transition. It's very smooth, and Marcus Jones and his staff, they're bending over backwards to address our concerns and that they hear us out, and we just think things are going really well. We're looking forward to the transition. There's a positive momentum that's building with the organization, and part of that is coming under the umbrella of the city. Everybody's on board with that, everybody is positive about it, looking forward to it. So any questions that you have?
The Board feels the same way.
The Board is very encouraged and positive. Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Kenny for taking this on. I'm not sure when he went on the Board, he realized that when his term came up, just being Chairman, he would be involved with this quite so intentionally. Thank you, Kenny. You kept a level head over there. It's been important. One thing I'd like to ask Marcus is, does this need federal, or state, or both approval, or is it something that we...
Well, we've done... Go ahead. It does not need federal approval, and we don't think it needs state approval, but that we're working with the state. Their involvement is more day-to-day, and they track that agreement that we see annually as an annual contract, and it's their legislation, but that the authorizing legislation gives the council, gives the council to create it independently and to bring it in. And so that while it does not appear to require the permission of anybody, we're working with the state's approval.
And the assets and liabilities all went right into the City Committee?
Any other questions? All right, thank you. I appreciate you being here. Marcus, you want to do the agenda over here?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things there. You have a revised agenda. We actually have one closed session item today, which is a legal matter, and we had one item that was scheduled for us to discuss tonight for April attempt that has been taken off. But with that said, that's basically the same agenda that you received on Friday. We're very excited to give you a presentational update on flooding. It's one of the five focus areas that we have been trying to tackle over the last six months, and we have a tag team on that particular presentation. We've just had an opportunity to do the CSB transition update. We'll give you an update from the administrative policies. This was a briefing that we provided to the Finance Administration and the Economic Development Committee. We also have an update for you on the Governor's School. I will say before I turn it over to Ron in terms of the flooding update, we have an opportunity for council interest and concerns. We'll make sure we have enough time, even if we have to pull something off the agenda. I do have in my backdrop, good, the Norfolk Emerging Leaders. Today we had the Youth in Government Day, and I do want to commend Winter Bendah. It was one of these issues that last year, we talked about having a day where we celebrated the youth in our high schools, both public and private, and Winter was able to pull this off. It was interesting. I tipped into the council chambers this afternoon, and I saw the Vice Mayor and Councilman Progiro and Councilman Nguyen speaking with the group, and it was a very good interaction back and forth. And that's something that we will do annually. So we had all five of our public high schools and three of the private high schools here today. And the reason I say that is that it leads into what's behind me and what we call the Norfolk Emerging Leaders Program. Last year, I think council had a good discussion about what we can do for youth during the summer. This program has been around for a while. Last year, we rebranded as the Norfolk Emerging Leaders, and I made an attempt to recruit some of the individuals that were actually here today in the Youth in Government Day. But we're going to have an opportunity for individuals between 16 and 19 years old. We're trying to expand the program this year to make it even bigger than last year, as well as a municipal internship program. We're going to focus on the graduate and undergraduate students, specifically in this area. We've already begun to have a positive feedback from that program. The applications are due by the end of April. And if I could just put one more in. I've given you a proposal for the budget presentation. We tried to model it after what occurred last year, and this is simply a proposal for council for something for you to discuss. But basically, we have the city manager's presentation being the same as last year at 4th Tuesday in April, with a public hearing being the 2nd, or the 2nd of May, then a work session being the 8th, and a council work session again on the 15th, with hopefully the adoption on the 15th also. I will say that right now, the 15th is not a planned council meeting. In the past, we've attempted to have the budget approved by the 15th of April. So that's just a proposal. So this is what we have now. Again, the presentation being the 24th of April, and the final approval from council being a target for the 15th of May. We typically do that because of the schools and the school's budget and trying to have that approved.
Is the 24th, that's a night meeting?
Yes, it is.
It is. And when is the night meeting for that? The vehicle, the...
The night meeting for that would be the 10th.
Yeah. Last year, the manager presented the budget a week later than the manager normally does because Marcus just came to work on February 1st. But in light of the fact that we've gone to these night meetings on, I guess, the 10th and the 24th, I guess the 24th is okay. I just don't want to get to the point where our budget discussions get, you know, it's pretty short right now. Most of the other cities have longer time periods than we do. Most of them, by the time you present your budget, everybody else's budget will be out there. So we want to make sure that we have, I mean, so the 24th, and then we have a meeting on the 2nd. Do we have a meeting between the 24th and the 2nd?
Well, the first is Election Day, and I'm not sure that we had a meeting planned for Election Day.
Do we have a meeting?
Yeah.
The election's on the...
On the 8th.
The 1st.
The 1st.
It is the first Tuesday after the first November.
Only on November elections.
Only in November.
It's May 1st, trust us.
I think you've been voted on.
Well, do we meet on May 1st?
No.
No, sir.
Normally, we would have the meeting on that Wednesday.
Oh, I mean, we always have the public hearing on the first Wednesday, and I don't want to change that. I just, typically what we would do, Marcus, is the manager, and we don't have to do that. The manager would make his presentation, and then the council would have in the following week to ask questions, and then we go into the public hearing the following week. It just seems like it's a shortened process. By the time the 15th gets here, the council will only have one opportunity to discuss the budget with you, and before we vote on the 15th. I mean, if this schedule's okay with everybody, maybe we'll put another meeting in here if we have to.
Is the 17th too early? Is that...
Yes.
No, I'm saying if we had a meeting on the 17th where it was presented, as opposed to, I don't want to hurt your schedule, but...
When did we have to vote it on?
Oh, by the end of May. If you do it on the 15th, we still have the 22nd to come back if something, and vote, you know, vote on it. If, for instance, we had asked him to lower the tax rate or something, we'd have, they could prepare the documents and stuff. I mean, we would do that, but the 22nd gives you a fallback, so...
I don't think, do we have a meeting scheduled on the 17th of April? That was an open meeting day, wasn't it?
Right, it's open.
Yeah. It's open. Talk to the calendar man back there.
Marcus, as long as you understand, come, you know, May 8th, you know, you're not going to schedule anything else on the calendar there. I mean, that's, or the 15th until we get this stuff. That's right. All right, is that okay with everybody then?
Yep.
Okay.
So, right now, the 17th is still not a meeting?
That's right.
Okay. One other agenda item. Marcus, do you want to tell the council about Norfolk State being here tonight?
Oh, that's right. Yeah. So, right before the formal meeting, we'll have Norfolk State here, and I think we have several rows that are already reserved for them to celebrate their success in the NCAA tournament, so we're very excited about that.
Right. So who will be here? Will Dr. Atwater then be here, do you know?
Breck has left the room.
Breck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Winter?
As I understand, it's the coach, and then the team, the AD, so they're all parking out in front.
Parking out front, they didn't take the light rail over?
Dangerous, I can't get a fault.
They got to run across the street.
Okay. Okay. Why don't we, since we're going to be short on time, I'm sure, why don't we do council interest and issues right now? Do we have any bank money? Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. There was a sign, a very prominent sign at the old second precinct about the fire training center, you know, being moved there. And I guess I'm interested, and wanted to know if, what are the costs associated, you know, with that move? You know, I mean, are they just going to be there? Is that going to be renovating to the building, or what was...
Initially, Councilman Riddick, there was going to be a structure placed there that would help the fire department with the training. Since we had a discussion, a discussion with James Rogers, as well as Chief Wise, initially that structure, I believe years ago, was by the fire training center. The fire department has enough funds to secure that structure, and what we're trying to do is find the appropriate place for it. So right now, that is not...
Talk about the tower that used to be behind?
That's right. That's right. So there's been, I apologize, the sign is still up there. There's been no determination on where that's going to go.
Right, okay. And I hope it doesn't go there. The members of community, you know, are kind of concerned about that. And then while we're talking about the fire department, if we could get some stats, whether they're still under any federal mandates, and what's the racial makeup of the fire department there, as well as the ranks, and also, what is the number of women there? And do we have any women officers, female, I guess you'd say?
Women's good.
What's good?
Women's good. Just not late.
Not lady.
Yeah, not lady. Or chick.
Okay. And so to see, you know, how many women we have outranked, and...
Why?
So, you mentioned the CSB. I'm also concerned about the Second Chances Program, and I think I've mentioned to you before, being moved away from stop organization. That's not the stop organization that we knew when it was initially, you know, put there, and I think we need to rescue that very, very valuable asset in our organization from there. That's all I have.
Okay, a couple of things. First off, I'd like to thank Marcus and the staff for making the transition of the Fleet Park Little League, Oklahoma City. Truly, when the ships got down, they got some recreation people, the sheriff brought some people out, and they really, in the last two, I mean, the cooperation, and we had a great opening morning, Saturday morning, and it was special to about, I think, eight or nine hundred young people that played out there. They really came through. I really appreciate Jordan, the staff, and Darryl, and the sheriff's and people, and it was a good day, and just, you know, as the mayor knows, we look at every site in the city of Norfolk, and then we turn it over to Marcus, and he solved the problem. So that was a good day. The second thing is, I know at your committee, you talked about the coal-fired plant and what have you. I'd like to bring that up so we can, you know, have a formal opinion on it as a council one.
We asked for it to come out, hopefully next week, the next meeting.
Yeah. I know some people may or may not have been briefed. I have. I think, I don't know why we're going to wait for everybody in the city to, I don't know how everybody else feels. I'd like to make a statement.
The committee's vote was to oppose the...
Right. I feel the same way. The only other thing is...
Can we do that, can we have a presentation and then a vote on it next week, just so we make sure we fill in all the blanks?
Sure. Here, what was the...
The coal-fired...
Oh, sure, okay.
We need, I'd like to, our council to pick, you know, whatever opinion we're going to take, let's take it. Let's not wait till every, I mean, I think most of us are opposed to it, at least the ones I've spoken to, and I don't know about the mayor or anybody else, but I think we ought to go ahead and do it rather than wait for every government agency in Hampton Roads to, you know. Last thing is, I know we're, have budget problems and planning, but I've gotten several calls about our permit process, rebuilding permits, and plan approval and site plan approval, and it's really, really gotten slow, and I know Frank's department, you know, we've got all kinds of budgetary problems and what have you, but I'm continuing to hear that we don't want, we want to be user-friendly, we don't want Norfolk to be the hardest city and town to build a building or build a home, or because we can't get through the process.
Councilman Nguyen, we've had some changes in stamping, and Frank has basically even used other staff members to start to get the backlog down. So we're going to address the backlog immediately, and then we're going to properly stamp as we go through.
How about retirees, consultants, or something, those people that know what they're doing and can come in until we can get through, I don't know.
Right, we're doing all we can, even doing overtime, just to get that backlog down.
However it's most affected, but it's hurting our reputation.
I got a, had a conversation with a couple folks too about the same thing.
I've had two or three calls on it, and I'm in the building industry, so I mean, not...
Somebody needs to take a look at the grand administration, you know, the people who do funds, and they can't get checks, and I've heard that from a couple places now. You know, you probably are issuing a thousand checks, and the two people that don't get are probably called by, but, you know, I'd like to talk to you about that too.
But this is a, this is a problem in the industry, I'm just telling you. It doesn't affect me because I don't need a building permit, but builders and developers and what have you, we don't want to, we want to be user-friendly, so whatever we need to do, I think it's, that's all I have.
Quickly, I'd like an update on the girls-on-the-run race, what happened with that because we had to move it, and I just want to make sure that, and I was the one that had to be moved, so I want to make sure that was moved. I'd also like an update from Dr. Kiper about the rumble strips on Hampton Boulevard. I know they're still there, and we had talked about looking into whether or not they were effective considering the complaints of the residents. And lastly...
How about, let's just take them up.
They're going to be removed.
Okay, thank you, John. Thank you.
They're going to be removed.
You hear that?
Yes.
John said they're coming up. All right.
And then lastly, we are, I think we're all aware of the controversies that often come up with convenience stores being put into our neighborhoods. On several of the task force I've been on, when you look at the crime stats, often the crimes are noted, or at least many times, we've noticed that there's been a confluence of crimes around convenience stores. I know we have gone to lengths to not allow single serves in new convenience stores, but I would really like to know if legally we can ban single serves in all of our stores. I, no? Why?
I'm, I'm, no disrespect.
But here's what I'm saying. I do not think it is fair to say one convenience store, you know, like all 7-Elevens, for instance, need to get rid of single serves. But I think if we make it consistent throughout our city, tell me a rationale for why we would serve single serves.
We can, with all the new special exceptions, for those entities that are grandfathered, we don't have the ability to go back and change the rules on them, but that going forward...
Right, I know that. Well, didn't we go back and take people's smoking away from them? I mean, in restaurants?
That was, that was...
That's a state. So once again, this is the Dylan rule. Is that what this is?
Yes, yes.
So, once again, we're, is it why we don't want the Dylan rule?
Along those lines, to piggyback on that, you've got convenience stores, and then we go to grocery stores and...
Right, that's what I'm saying, single serves.
I mean, we don't traditionally prohibit them. I mean, we're pretty consistent on convenience stores, new ones that we don't allow single serving. Maybe we ought to go to all, I mean, I guess if they can't go there, then go down to Shreve to Eckerd and get a single serving. So I think we ought to try to be more consistent on that, too.
But I think there's a certain kind of element that you're trying to keep away from a convenience store that you don't have in a grocery store. I mean, if you want to go to the grocery store and get your 20-20, you're going to not stand outside the grocery store and drink it.
Obviously, you don't shop for Risha.
If you can't get it...
You don't shop for Risha.
Okay, we got to move along.
Thank you. I just wanted an answer, thank you.
Roger, before that comment, I was going to apologize to you for last week. No, but seriously, I looked at the tape of last week, and I don't want to have a misconception about me and Mr. Nguyen not getting along. I wasn't arguing with Mr. Nguyen last week.
I was new. And yelling. You weren't arguing that way.
So I guess I need to see this too.
I wasn't arguing. So, Mr. Nguyen, I do apologize if it came off that way. I went, but I was passionate about my point. The other thing that I had, I wanted to give this to the man, this is, this is something we need to actually coordinate with Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority. This is, the people over in Valentine, we have a, I guess, a public works facility over there, and the trucks have done tremendous damage. I know John Kiper knows about this issue, but I want to give it to you in terms of the residential and the number of potholes and the condition of these streets. There's an arterial vessel that could alleviate that, and the RHA, they own the land as a right-of-way that brings the traffic out through Princess Anne. Talked to this someone, but I wanted to make its way to this, to your desk, to talk about it. This is when we do have the resources to do that, and that'd take a lot of money. I know you're concerned about the resource that we do utilize in that section of town. The other thing that I...
He's looking at me.
No, the other thing that I wanted to say is that, you know, there's a, there's been a rash of murders in our city here recently, and, you know, when you look at the types of murders that have taken place, these are not murders that the police could have prohibited from happening if they had been honest. These are senseless murders that are happening inside houses at people that know each other. And so, for me, understanding that, my question is, we have a lot of guns on our streets, and I'm concerned as the weather changes and it gets warmer, that we're vigilant, from a police standpoint, that we try to mitigate this issue of these young people having some of the weaponry that they do have, and the types of senseless murders that continue to happen, and, you know, we have to speak to it because staying silent about it doesn't help it. I don't want people to think that we somehow condone the behavior that is, that is taking place in our city, where we have young people, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18 years old, that are losing their lives senselessly in these streets. And so, you know, and it's not even gang violence. I mean, this is just, you know, self-hatred. And so I think that we somehow have to address it. I don't have the answer, and I know it's no silver bullet, but if we don't address it, or at least talk about it, it's not going to get better. And it starts there, and then those bullets start flying, and they start hitting innocent people, like the young lady over in Hampton that was in her home, and a bullet launched in her neck, you know. And so, if we talk about it now, and our police understand what's out there, and the types of weapons they're up against, and whether through our agencies that we have, Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, our parks and recs, that we could develop some programs that engages kids, these young people, in other ways. And I'm not talking about programs like midnight basketball, because that does not help. I mean, but trying to help these young kids share that mentality, and hopefully go back to school and graduate and be positive contributors to this community. So, I know I'm talking around, but I just want to bring that to the forefront, because when I look at some of these murders that have taken place, I'm like, wow, it shouldn't have happened. People didn't know each other, you know, and that's senseless, and I just contribute, I call that self-hatred, you know, so...
You know, let the manager get through the budget, and maybe bring all those agencies that you talked about in here. We have just one of those two o'clock meetings and just, you know, get a lot of that out of what you've said. We had a couple, one guy, these two guys bumped into each other, and they recognized each other on our streets, and, you know, it was like the shootout at the OK Corral, they both had guns, you know, and then they shot at each other. One guy ran away, one guy had lived, one guy died, but it was just because they were just sort of, they didn't like each other. But anyway, but we ought to get, we'll get that in here. I think that'd be a great conversation. So, okay.
I have a couple of things, but I want to piggyback off of something that Vice Mayor Burford said, in following up with police action. You know, increasingly, I'm hearing, and probably other council members are hearing also, that we give tips to the police, we tell them the address, we give them the car, we give them the license plate number, we tell them what time they're selling drugs because they're doing it, you know, all through the day. We watch them, we see them, you know, doing these things, and we get nothing from the police. We get no update, we get, you know, nothing, and things go on. Of course, you know, the citizens understand we have investigations, but it's very frustrating to them when, in one of these instances, you know, one of these houses had been reported several times, you know, for drug activity. And so, you know, it's frustrating to the citizens when they give information, and it appears that nothing is happening. And even if there's nothing more than a simple follow-up from the community resource officers, because community resource officers say, oh, well, that's the gang unit, or that's investigations, or, you know, whatever, all these people need to be communicating with one another so that when the CROs go to the civic leagues, they can... to the civic league, they can, you know, they're not getting a beating because they don't have any information, but they also, they actually have something to contribute to say, there is an ongoing investigation, we can't give you a lot of details. But, you know, let them know, let the citizens know that something is being done so that we don't wake up one morning and there's a murder in this house where it could have been prevented. Another thing that may be an option is, one church in Chesapeake some years ago had a, something like a gun turning, or something like that. I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was kind of like, no questions asked, wipe it down before you get it here, just bring it and leave it. And the pastor of the church took possession and then turned everything over to the police. That may be something, you know, there are a lot of guns, and the gun laws just changed to let people buy as many as they want, or whatever it is. But that might be a way for us to get excessive guns, at least some of them, off the street. Just bring it in, you know, to some location, some parking lot that you can set up in or whatever, and, you know, we won't write your fingerprints, we won't, whatever, just bring it and leave it. And, you know, that might be an option. What I really have is, I got a call about the Blyden Library. And I know Mr. Riddick had requested a meeting about the Blyden Library, and some things have been done over there. But they got a new air conditioning, air conditioning unit installed. And I'm going to email you the pictures.
I have Mr. James going over to take care of this one.
It's ugly. It looks like a storage unit. It's awful over there. So, great, that'd be great, so I can get an update on what the progress is on that one. And the second thing I have is Camp Estella Elementary School. I know we talked last week when NRHA was here, and we talked about the amount of land that we had, and, you know, there was some comment about, I know we're ready to go, and, you know, but we want to make sure that Camp Estella, if I'm not mistaken, is the next school to be built. We want to keep Camp Estella as the next school to be built.
Want to comment? We can, I want to do two of them. I want to do both at the same time.
Cool.
I mean, I don't want one to wait till the other one, I mean, I want to get out with both of them.
Good deal.
By the, what we do, I mean, it'll take four or five years by the time you do this. So the next one will be 10 years. I mean, I want to build two of them at the same time.
Good deal.
And then move to the next two, because you'll never get to Ocean View or Larchmont if you start lining these things up in a sequence.
I just want to make sure we didn't get involved.
Okay, I want to do two and then two.
I just want to make sure we didn't get involved. And last thing, do we have any, I know you said last time that we were looking at, some time ago, that we were looking at a way to expedite tall weeds and grass. It's about to be tall weeds and grass time. So if we could, you know, get an update on maybe an expedited process for the codes for tall weeds and grass, and how that's going to be handled this year, that would be wonderful.
Daryl and Darrell are tired of hearing my voice, so yes.
We need to cut our own tall weeds and grass before we start ticking the clock.
Yes.
Because we got, if the spring came earlier and the summer would have warmed, I mean, winter was warm, so there are a lot of mitigating circumstances, but we need to catch up.
All right, thank you.
I know we have the unfair practices in Ocean View of allowing businesses to stay open and sell alcohol. But now my concern is shifting to the morning. And, you know, there's a business, and there's a lot of different factors to it, but there was an email from Planning that said that staff would not recommend allowing alcohol sales before 11:00 because of council practices. And, you know, I have a restaurant owner that contacted, met with the civic league presidents in that area that will be coming before, and he wants to be able to have mimosas in the morning. And if I read that email correctly that came with this last vote, that this guy's not going to be allowed to do this. And I don't understand, do we don't have restaurants in Norfolk that sell mimosas? Is that-
Is this on the weekends or the weekdays?
I don't, I mean, it's going to be weekdays, he wants to be able to, so I'm just confused by the practices. Every week, we vote on special exceptions for businesses to be able to sell alcohol to 2:00 a.m. And, you know, we still have this inconsistency across the city with how we're doing this. And now, it's breakfast. Now it's, this guy wants to sell mimosas. It's a finest out, it's not a bar, wants to have mimosas. And so I'm worried now because we met, and all three civic league presidents said that they were in favor of it because they know this is a good business, he's trying to bring that part up. And now it's going to get killed because of, am I wrong? Is staff against? I mean, is city council against? I mean, does he want to start drinking, selling mimosas at like 8:00 in the morning?
Yeah, like 8:00, 8:00 in the morning.
The only, the only, the only organization that we're allowed to sell alcohol that early in the morning is Nordstrom's. And Mason Andrews made that happen. But it's been a practice that drinking before 11 o'clock is just, it's just too early to be drinking. I don't care whether it's a mimosa, whether it's corn liquor, but it's something that we have followed, that, you know, all, you know, we, I'm opposed to the number of ABC licenses, especially exceptions that we even issue. As a matter of fact, because of that, we had a presentation one time by Lyndon Newcombe saying that, you know, although we do issue them, that they, you know, are protected. I just don't think that we need to be promoting drinking alcohol.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't want to promote it. I just want to make sure we're being consistent.
Exactly as Mr. Riddick indicates, citywide, we have not allowed alcohol sales, except in very limited situations like Nordstrom's before 11 o'clock. And in this particular case, the proprietor was advised that that is a policy we've applied on a citywide basis. They asked to be able to start selling as early as 8:00. I told them that based on past practices of city council, we couldn't staff support it. They would have the ability to ask for that, and it would be a council decision.
But we have establishments that are, that have off-premise before 11:00, that are restaurants that sell-
We do allow off-premise ABC sales beginning much earlier, but not for on-premise consumption.
So no place that has a breakfast brunch that offers mimosas on Saturday morning can offer a mimosa before 11:00? Is that what you're saying?
Okay, before we get too far down this road, why don't we schedule some time?
Right.
So we can all have our, because I get the feeling Tommy's got something more he wants to say. And Paul's right, I think that's what, that's been our practice. And, but can we do that? So, I mean, we could probably take up an hour talking about that right now.
It's only for mimosas, Andy. It's not for selling beer at 8:00 in the morning.
Well, you get mimosas, and you get Bloody Marys.
Right. I just, but-
Alcohol is alcohol.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to say it's alcohol.
Yeah.
But in any event, we'll schedule some time. All right, in the next couple weeks.
Sounds like it's-
Let everybody come out.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make, we got an hour left, and the manager's got a bunch of stuff.
Just one announcement, and you do know about this. The city will be hosting the Virginia First Cities Quarterly Meeting. That's going to be Friday, June 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00. I encourage council members to come out and participate. It's going to be at the Half Moon Cruise Terminal. And again, we're going to have city staff there as well. But, and one of the things we're going to talk about is passenger rail, light rail, along with some other topics that were discussed at the General Assembly in this past session. And you'll get an idea of what the Virginia First Cities actually do in conjunction with helping our calls in the city of Norfolk.
Okay, thank you. Flooding.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Purposes of this presentation is to provide you an update on the activities that are carried out under our current flooding strategy. This presentation, we're going to try to keep to 15 minutes here. Items included will be an overview of what our strategy is, an update on mitigation studies and the projects that are recommended under those studies, and an update on legislative initiatives that support our strategies. Over the course of the past year, and I believe the last time you had a presentation on this was last summer, city staff has taken on a comprehensive approach to address precipitation and tidal flooding across the entire city. Realizing the magnitude by which we must address this issue, our work plan has evolved into a four-pronged strategy. Mr. Mayor, at the end of your last presentation last summer, you asked for a strategy, and it's involved in, evolved into this four areas. We often talk about projects, but this, this issue requires us to look at things in a collaborative and comprehensive way. So the four areas that we work through our strategy is, in planning, this is a long-term type of planning, study and analysis, modeling, simulation. We prepare, which speaks to more of an immediate response and how we react in an emergency situation. Mitigation, that we'll speak to, and then we need to communicate and increase awareness. There are many activities under these areas on any given day that city staff is working on. The cities with, the department heads of the departments of emergency, preparedness, utilities, planning, public works, city manager's office meets every Monday afternoon to address this issue. We have cross-collaboration with the staff participating in the activities of our flooding strategy. The city has ongoing studies that you, that you have been privy to before, and John Kiefer will give an update on this evening. We still have ongoing shoreline protection analysis and studies. We have legislative initiatives, and we also have a current analysis underway for how our city codes address future building. In the areas of preparedness, we participate in the National Incident Management System, which certifies our executive staff for the response of emergencies. We participate through our city codes, through the National Flood Insurance Program, which provides a benefit and reduction in rates for our residents. We're a certified storm-ready community. We train citizens on all risks, and in particular flooding, through our CERT activities, which is Community Emergency Response Team. And we also continue to look at and work with the regional planning organizations on our evacuation strategies. When it comes to mitigation, we have ongoing, as you know, on an annual basis, stormwater improvements, shoreline protection. We have initiated property acquisition. We have tidal flooding mitigation projects, and Mr. Kiefer again will speak to that. We participate in the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and do Elevate Homes as those awards are granted. And then we also, through our floodplain manager in the Department of Management, participate in the increased cost of compliance program under the National Flood Insurance that gives the ability for homeowners to provide a match for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. In the areas of communication, we've really had significant outreach over the past nine months. Specifically, we've established a citizen-focused group that is also inclusive of civic league presidents and other interested citizens, to give us some guidance and input on activities that we have that are working under the strategy. We've established an Experts Advisory Committee, realizing that we have to marry up the sciences with engineering, that we also can't do this alone as a city, that we need our governmental agencies that are at the other federal levels and across the region to give us suggestions and input on areas that we need to improve our strategies. We do communicate with citizens on the, the need to make sure that our stormwater system is uninhibited and to keep stormwater drains clear. We give you council updates. And then in April, we're going to be launching a flooding-specific flood prevention and mitigation website. This is intended to be the catch-all for all information that any interested citizen that wants to know how their property is affected, how they respond to a storm, and what they do when flooding does occur, whether it be rainfall or tidal-oriented, that they can go to this. This site will also have the ability to become a, as part of our, when we do have a major storm such as a hurricane, this will also be the site that can give you real-time updates as far as where we actually have flooding throughout the city. Last summer, you did receive initial preliminary recommendations of Fugro, which we have contracted with to give us a specific mitigation project recommendations. And John Kiefer is here to give you the final recommendations for those specific projects.
Thank you. As scheduled, Fugro has continued with their engineering studies and has completed the preliminary engineering on two of the projects and is about to do so on the third. The Hague Flood Wall, I'll show you that project in a second, but they have completed the preliminary design that I'll show you. An estimated cost of $60 million. Pretty Lake, same thing, $50 million. Mason's Creek, they are, the preliminary design will be completed in the next two to three weeks, and we'll have continuing discussions on that. But we do have an estimate of $30 million on that, and we also have to undertake some things to look at the quality of the lake out there, including possible dredging. Ohio Creek was the fourth area that we looked at, and a long time ago, last summer, we determined there were some actions we could take, and we're in the process of implementing those recommendations. The studying does continue. There are other areas of the city, and an analysis of the rest of the city is in progress, including tidal flooding as well as rainfall flooding, and we expect to get those results in the coming year. This is the Hague. This shows the recommended project that we talked about before. There is a floodgate across the mouth of the creek, a pump station, and some floodwalls. Now, the floodwalls typically through the Freemason area are very preliminary. We're going to need to talk about the specific locations, exactly how we do that. But that's what's required of this project, floodwalls and tide gate to that extent to protect the basin from flooding. Pretty Lake, similarly, a floodgate across the mouth of the Shore Drive Bridge with a pump station, and then floodwalls and other areas again to keep the water from overtopping, overtopping from Pretty Lake that will protect that area. Mason's Creek, as mentioned, we are, Fugro is finishing up these recommendations, but what they're looking at is a pump station out at the mouth of where the water goes under the Navy runway, an additional stormwater culvert under there that they can pump into. And we're in the process of evaluating that with Fugro and looking at some other permutations, including possibly some walls and so forth along the-
Where would the culvert be?
Under the Navy's, under the Navy's runway somewhere, and that's one of the things we need to look at. Let's see. It's under this area here somewhere. The exact route is something that we're, we're looking at, that will be one of the challenges, is how we, how we do that. But we do need that for the stormwater discharge. In Ohio Creek, we did find some solutions to this, some potential property purchases up in the Spartan Village area. We found that there, we can put a tide gate here with an automated gate valve that will close that off to flooding, that will protect us from tidal flooding and ultimately possibility of putting a pump station and then possibly enlarging the box culvert under Norfolk State University.
And the cost on the pump station?
Cost of the pump station, John, is about $5 million range.
We're putting a diesel one in there with this gate project.
And we have funding, and we are moving ahead with that part of the project.
And the funding is from our capital budget?
Yes, sir.
And would most of it be to mitigate the flooding that occurs in Spartan Village?
Well, we're looking at property purchase, okay, and then that's where the worst flooding is, but in this whole intersection here, when we get heavy rains and also have the heavy, the high tides, that's when we have a real problem. This will prevent the two from acting together, that we can shut off the tides and then be better able to handle rainfall.
What property purchases, John?
We're looking at some potential property purchases, some low areas in Spartan Village.
Because when we had that, I call it a disaster, you know, a couple of years ago, there was a thought of purchasing an area called the Bow.
Yes, sir.
And then creating a retention pond there that would give us relief, you know, in the Brownton and Park Avenue area. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir. And whether, you know, whether we put a retention pond in there, do some development is to be determined, but that is what we're looking at, yes, sir.
What type of development were you talking about?
Well, it could be possible to raise the area and put something in associated with Norfolk State University, but we still do need to have a retention pond capability in there somehow.
Now, is the acquisition in this plan you're talking about, is that, you have money for that as well?
That's a capital need that we're working on.
John, just so I can be real, have we discussed with Norfolk State this, because it looks like it abuts right up onto the campus.
We have had some discussions with some folks at Norfolk State. I'm not sure that we've talked with the current administration.
Well, the only reason I ask is, is that I think that they, we really ought to be at the table with them and see if we do end up making certain purchases, what they may have plans for expansion of the university.
We've, we've been at the table with them as relates to this particular project here.
And what are their plans for expansion of the university?
Yes, sir.
That they do have some.
They, they don't have the resources to their real estate development. Again, we have families that, again, we approached them years ago to try to partner with them to purchase the whole thing.
Right.
Okay, but in the interim, we've got families there now that, every year, it floods, and it's not so much the units, but it's the cars as well.
Right.
They lose their vehicles. And so what we've been trying to do is mitigate that. We've even had the discussions with various families. And I was hoping that we didn't get too in-depth- And I was hoping that we didn't get too in-depth with it because, again, once you start to talking about acquiring things, then it takes the price out of the ballpark, you know, we can't even do what we need to do. But the discussions we've had about what needs to happen here, I thank the administration for staying on task in terms of, with everything that we have here, that they're still committed to finding relief for those families that are in there as well as alleviating the problem at the end of the day overall.
I agree with that. I'm just saying that it abuts the campus as I look at it, and I would think that the university, if we're looking at acquisitions, I'm not against it, I'm just saying that it would be nice if we do acquisition hand-in-hand with the university.
With the new administration, we need to have those discussions.
Right, and that they may wish to seek some expansion there that would not be affected by flooding perhaps, but they may wish to use it for some fields or something else, and I assume it'd be through condemnation, am I correct?
No.
If we're market value, we go and pay market value? I mean, we're just going to say...
They can't take the property to condemnation.
We need to have the discussions to come up with specific strategy.
If they were using it for their own purpose.
If they were using, they would have to use normal redevelopment.
I understand, but they could do it if they were going to expand the campuses.
They would have to have money to do it.
I don't know that they can to do that. They would have to be declared blighted. We've been through that. We're not doing that again.
You couldn't even do it.
The main thing is, I mean, is, they've taken that away from us. But if there are some properties that are vacant and for sale, I mean, I would certainly think that those are the sort of things that we could, and then once we got a foothold in there, certainly we'd want to talk to Norfolk State. But that's, we don't, right now, we don't have any of that.
Right, but we do have a plan.
Right. I would add that Norfolk State had a stormwater study of their campus done in parallel with our study, so we have been working closely with them.
I think I was right. I probably shot my mouth off.
This is...
Andy, I don't think we can get...
We couldn't.
We could condemn for a retention pond. Certain flood mitigation...
Let me ask you this. Let's say, let's say somebody says, "I'm not selling." They're not selling, it ain't happening.
And if they, if they get...
They say, "I'll stay through the flood."
Then that's what they can do.
Maybe that is, man, that's what's going to happen.
Unless we break...
Well, let me, let me say, you know, you know the discussions we were having.
I know.
These people, for the most part, want to get out of there. Okay, this is, this has been something long overdue. We had the folk from the 700 Club to come in and provide a tremendous amount of help and services to those families that were in there. A lot of those homes still have mold in them, you know, and so those...
I'm not saying it's not a dire circumstance, but when I...
Right, but I know you're playing, the very things that you're talking about are the very things that we've been through.
Are they owners or are they renters?
They're a combination of both, a combination of both, renters and owners.
I think we actually own a couple of properties ourselves.
Yeah, we have one in there. But it's not as easy as just buying here, 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 because they're townhouses and if, you just can't take them, you know, tear one down and you don't have the other one. You want to be careful because you don't want to create, you buy this one, you buy this one, you buy this one, and there you have a, an area of blight. You got boarded up properties, you got people living in two or three of them, but the rest of them boarded up. You want to be strategic and try to, whatever you're doing there, you want to have, where you're able to go in and get them all and knock it down.
I get all that.
You're talking about two different things here.
Right, I think you're talking, I'm not saying what you're, I think we're talking right past each other. I get what you're saying. I'm not saying it's wrong.
No.
The only, I think it's, and I'm not going to get into, you know, how this should occur. I think if we're going to purchase it for this purpose, that I'm afraid we're going to run into certain issues the way we have at other times, we're trying to buy blighted property, where a guy says, "I'm not going to sell it for $35 a unit. I'm selling mine for $50 a unit." And I don't care what you're going to do, whether you're doing it for a good purpose or a bad purpose. And we could run into that, especially if we're trying to buy in a block unit like this and trying to eradicate this problem. So I understand where you're coming from. The initial discussion was, I think we should do it in combination with the university, that the university has a say because it abuts their campus. If I was the president of that university, I'd want to have some kind of say in what the city is going to do, maybe I could partner with them.
But then they need to buy it all. We've been down that road. And all I'm saying to you is, you know, we've been down that road. If they, if they want to acquire it once we do what we need to do, that's fine, but we're going to move forward. And I don't want to go back to the table and start negotiating and stop the process.
I'm not saying anything. You're talking right past me. It's almost like we're talking just to talk. I get it.
Okay, we both, we all get it. So why don't we, go ahead, John.
You're fussing at me.
I'm fussing at you. Yes, I am.
This is a complicated slide, but it shows the depth of the works that Fugro is doing. What this shows is areas subject to floods with higher tides in the blue and the yellow, and it shows all the critical facilities in the city as well as areas that have flooded and so forth, and just shows the fact that we're moving on to this as we look at the rest of the city. The next steps, we are going to make these project reports available to the public. We are coordinating with the Army Corps of Engineers and the congressional delegation, as we'll talk about in a second, for inclusion of the Fugro studies in our federal efforts. Fugro is going to continue and give us a preliminary review of environmental requirements, and we're going to continue as the citywide study and analysis of all the water sheds. Brian Pennington's going to talk a little more.
Just a quick question about...
Yes, sir.
...dredging. There's an impression that the city hasn't kept up with dredging like in Pretty Lake in that we need to go back in there and that could be a cost for, it could help reduce some of the flooding. I know it's not the magic pill, but do we have, do we do a regular analysis of dredging and where we are with it?
Yes, sir. I can update you on that. It won't help the flooding, but we do have a regular maintenance dredging program. I'll give you some information on that.
Can you get that in the chat?
On Broad Creek? Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. So council, I'm happy to report to you that we have actually made significant progress as it relates to our campaign to hopefully acquire some assistance from both the state and federal government with our flood mitigation efforts. Extensive efforts specifically to use our influence to include the congressional delegation to get them to essentially act in an advocacy role for the city. And happy to report that so far, everything is going fantastic. We're also doing really well at the Commonwealth. I'll brief you about it in just a minute. When we started with trying to get the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to assist us, we started off with what's called Section 205 funding, which is a funding string to assist with flood mitigation planning efforts and other various efforts that we would qualify for. What was surprising to me is that when we started to meet with the headquarters folks, they actually told me that they didn't realize that the city of Norfolk had a flooding problem. So right there immediately, there seemed to be some problem with communication between what was happening at Norfolk District and what was happening at the headquarters. And so quickly decided that not only did we want to provide additional information, we also decided to host a reconnaissance bus tour in which representatives from the Army Corps of Engineers headquarters came down with the Norfolk District Corps folks. In addition, we had a representative and sometimes even two representatives from each of our congressional delegation's offices. That's both senators and both congressmen. Both of our congressmen, as you know, council, have hosted what I would call meetings on flooding because of the significant calls that they were receiving in their offices relating to flooding issues. And so all this together has led to both Congressman Ridgell and Scott signing a joint letter asking on behalf of the city for the corps' specific assistance. I'm happy to report to council that already we've been notified that we have received $100,000. That's $50,000 each for Section 205 funding, which will begin our first initial efforts. That money will be used for what we're trying to do is incorporate the Fugro analysis to really get the corps in a position so that we can expedite our timeline, our campaign, if you will, to identify additional funding streams. So next steps, at least from the federal level, we are trying to move forward expeditively as possible on the reconnaissance study. We have the funding in place. We think based on our analysis of previous similar efforts that $100,000 plus or minus a few thousand gets us exactly what we need. In FY14, after the reconnaissance study, which is a very high-level preliminary study to examine what it is that we are facing as far as flooding challenges, we get into specific feasibility, a feasibility study, and it'll go into a lot more depth than what John Kiefer provided you, but we'll actually be looking at the specific recommendations. Those recommendations essentially are those flood mitigation efforts that produce the biggest results for, in the most efficient ways, as costly, cost-effective as it possibly can be. After feasibility study, we'll quickly move into obviously an environmental impact statement to look at what the design solutions, the construction projects that have been identified, how that would impact the environment. Of course, you have the needed requirements. And then ultimately moving to construction. There's a lot of steps that are involved in between there. This is very high-level, just to give council and let council understand that there are multiple steps, that there are reasons that we are going through the significant process that we're going forward with as it relates to the federal government. Switching gears, we spent a lot of effort this general assembly session pushing a council request for the Commonwealth to actually take a closer look at sea level rise and flooding specifically as it relates to the shoreline and coastline communities. I'm also happy to report to council that our bill has passed the general assembly. Almost unanimously, we did have one vote against us in the House, but we got 40 votes in the Senate. I checked with the Budget Committee staff yesterday. It looks like we have the funding sorted, the funding put in place for the study to be initiated, but it's not a done deal until...
Who voted against it in the House?
Delegate Ware.
Where's he from, Onzele?
It's a Palatan mayor.
And what, and why was, why did he vote no, did we ever say why?
I didn't circle back and ask him. I can find out for you if you're curious.
You filed it and remembered it, right?
That's what I'm telling you. I remembered. I looked to see which the one was.
Onzele? Ware?
No, Ware. He's the history teacher.
Lee Ware, history.
Of the other two Wares, yeah. So just to kind of sum it up, the purpose of the study really is to get VIMS engaged. The Commonwealth is essentially commissioning Virginia Institute of Marine Science in partnership with Old Dominion University, in partnership with Hampton Roads Planning District, as well as the different localities, especially in Hampton Roads Eastern Shore, that are directly impacted by sea level rise. All will be participating in this year-long comprehensive study. The study's ultimate purpose will be to be used for the next general assembly session to hopefully start getting us into a position in which the state ultimately will consider some type of flood mitigation fund. All the monies that we are pursuing at the federal level does have a match requirement, non-federal sponsor match requirement hovering around 35% depending on what the use is. And so the idea would be, after we get through the three or four steps at the federal level, by the time the state catches up, hopefully there will be a fund that will be created that we will be able to subscribe to, to offset some of the match requirements for the construction of our flood mitigation projects to be identified. That's all. John, answer any questions.
That's, are you going to...
Just summarize, Mr. Mayor.
In summary, you know, we believe we've got a very robust and comprehensive approach for dealing with flooding here in the city. We've had great efforts of what Brian and John Kiefer's and all the other departments, Kristen Lentz, Emergency Preparedness and Planning, through, you know, various-pronged approach. What we have to do now, and we have to remind ourselves, is that if we want federal and state assistance, we have to go through their processes. And so, you know, we may be asked, "Why have you got to study this? This has been studied to death." We do have to meet their requirements, but luckily, we've found the avenues to some degree that we can expedite some of that with the analysis that we've already paid for with Fugro and the willingness of the Army Corps to accept some of that. We're starting to expedite that process. While we're, while they're doing these studies, we have to prepare ourselves for how we're going to match, if we do are able to achieve a federal and state support, how we'll match that and how we'll plan for the future, and we'll work through that over the next 12, 24 months for a plan for achieving that.
Marcus, I think this is really good stuff. I think it's really an intelligent, you know, approach to this. I'd like to bundle it somehow and get it out to the, especially the affected areas, you know, whether it's Mason Creek or at Pretty Lake, I mean, so the community can know what we're doing and they probably have some insights as well. We could take this show on the road. And then secondly, hurricane season's not too far away. I know it's just March, but could we do a couple town hall types of discussions about hurricane preparedness? Every year it gets a little more worrisome and to talk, and it's with some information about evacuation, when people would be given the notice and who had, you know, at various levels. But if we got out there early and tried to engage the community, it might take it some of what we're doing more seriously when that hurricane does come up here. So, you know, a really nice outreach effort to talk about hurricane preparedness.
We could probably do that hand-in-hand when we go, like, let's say you go to Pretlo and do this in Pretlo. I mean, Ron had mentioned it before the meeting.
Sure.
And while we're at Pretlo, we're doing this, we're showing the civic leagues in the northwestern side of the city about this, then we can discuss, you know, that hurricane preparedness at the same time, do the same thing out there. And since Anthony's not here, I can speak because I won't get fussed at. But is it, did you, I didn't hear, and I may have been wrong, I didn't hear the Navy as being part of this partnership.
Yes.
Are they at the table?
They're part of our Experts Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Yes.
Because they really do need to be, Anthony's back, so I'll be quiet, but they really do need to be at the, they need to be at the table with us because we're talking about with the pump station going under the runway.
Yeah.
I mean, it's their culvert, but also I think that they, it needs to be understood that you have people that live around Pretty Lake, Pretty Lake in Bayview, the Hague, that, you know, go to work at the base, whether they're civilians or military personnel, and that it affects their own personnel getting to and from the base. So it's a significant issue for the base as it is. So I just, as long as they're a strong partner and perhaps when our veteran affairs person comes up, I understand we do have a variety of Navy agents in our, right?
Yes.
That perhaps is something that he should be liaised on with. It's just a thought.
Just to share, our first meeting we had with our Experts Advisory Committee was really a two or three-hour program that we had where every one of those agencies and partners shared what they are doing or what they might recommend that we should seek to do as a group to look at. So we'll be meeting quarterly and, you know, our plans and programs will evolve and come together.
We all have done a great job. Very well done.
You're on to something in that that seems to be helping our cause in that we have the world's largest military base.
I would think.
They can't get to the base because of flooding. That's our compelling national interest. We have to, most of the authorizations for the federal government to get involved, and we have, we have to demonstrate what the federal concern is. And so it makes it easier for us to keep the, it may be very close. And there also is potentially, as we get further down the road, some funding opportunities for us to partner with, especially in the Mason's Creek area.
Well, I mean, they gave us Mason Creek and made it the situation it is, and they should help us alleviate it.
I'm with you.
I agree with what Andy was saying about when we're doing the hurricane presentations, giving updates, but just out of some caution, after the last town hall meeting we did with Congressman Ridgell, it's such an emotional issue for some people that even, no matter what the city says about what they're, we're going to do with flooding.
Oh, I know.
They, they don't believe, you know, that what we're saying is the right way to do it or, you know, it's always questions of concern. So I don't know if this needs to be framed in a different way. Maybe Bob and his folks need to, where's Bob? Maybe you guys need to have at it and, you know, do your magic with it. It's just, it's hard. I know the numbers have come down since that presentation on the costs because some people didn't believe it was that expensive, and that's good that we've gone back and reevaluated it. I just, it becomes emotional, or if you go over in Spartan Village and you start talking about tearing down, you know, houses, you know, people can blow things out of proportion. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't open it back up for people to be angry with us about. But it's, I mean, it's the most, I mean, significant, they've done a great job getting everybody together and working hard. I just don't want that to be unraveled because of emotions from people.
That's excellent. Well, and I know that Ron mentioned earlier, but we do have Jim Reddick on board and he is known throughout the state.
is known throughout the state for the ability to do exactly what you've been suggesting tonight, so we'll be all over that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to skip down to the pending items so that we can make sure we get this. So, you have this information at least two weeks before you're asked to vote on it. And the issue we have is a 7/11 proposed for 100 West 21st street in Gent. Planning Commission has recommended denial of this request. What they are asking for are two special exceptions, one for 24-hour sales and one for off-premise alcohol sales, and they also would need a PCO development certificate because they are in the 21st Street PCO. It is within the Gent commercial area. This is an area that where we do have a complete mix of commercial and residential uses. The actual site, you may recognize it, is the wig store that is currently there. And what they're proposing is a joint use of the wig store with a 7/11. The area is zoned to C2, which does permit these uses. I share that same sentiment, Mr. Ryan.
Wig is mixed.
And what they're looking for is a special exception for alcohol sales, and what that would be is alcohol sales until 6:00 AM, from 6:00 AM until 12:00 midnight, which is consistent with the hours we've applied in other parts of the city. And we do need to acknowledge that this site would meet all ordinance requirements for this use. The PCO development certificate is looking at the design of the building. They are proposing some significant modifications to the building. This would require waivers from the building placement requirement, as well as the parking location, because they're looking to renovate the existing building, and you already have parking in front of the building, which the PCO general rules would typically not allow. But based on the existing placement of the building, you may waive that requirement. This is what the store was originally proposed to look like. So, yes, we're going to try to keep the wig as a landmark item, and then put the 7/11 in the corner closest to the street. You might notice they're opening up this building quite a bit with this proposal.
You've got Marcus smiling on this one.
That was the original proposal, and then this comes back to be closer to what GBA was originally asking to do with this, because this has been a long negotiation with many people. And when we got to the public hearing, what we had were the proponents, were the applicant, seven citizens came and spoke in support. We had three letters of support, a qualified letter of support from the Gent Business Association, as well as letters of support from Dumars and the Nero. In opposition, we also had seven citizens and a letter of opposition from the Gent Neighborhood League. Our staff recommendation was for approval, because it is consistent with all plans and ordinance requirements. Planning Commission recommended denial on a three-to-two basis. The majority agreed with the community, there are simply too many 7/11s in the area, which was the position that was raised by the neighborhood. The minority indicated that the use is permitted by the zoning. They felt that the proposal met all ordinance requirements, and they saw no basis for denying it. And I should acknowledge that as 7/11 has continued to work with the Gent Business Association, I have now been given a letter that will be included in your package. The Gent Business Association now has offered unqualified support for-
Who were the two no's?
The two yeses?
The two.
This was a three-to-two.
Deny him, sorry, the two yeses.
The two yeses, I believe, were Ms. Chandler and Mr. Law. Thank you, Steve.
The denial was before they had changed their plan?
Yes. They continued to work with the Gent Business Association to revise the plan.
And they've been back to the Neighborhood Association since they revised that plan?
No, sir.
Can we ask them to go back? I know there's still friction there, but I would, if they could make one more pass.
The Gent Neighborhood League indicated to me that their interest in looking at this would only be if 7/11 would agree to give up their single sales throughout the remainder of the area, which really should not be an issue that would be addressed as part of this application.
I understand.
This would not allow single sales. I mean, it's, in all off-premise permits, whether it's a grocery store, a convenience store, a specialty store, we have routinely, for the past eight or nine years, prohibited single sales with two exceptions. Kilbasa, a specialty store over off of, in the extreme eastern part of town, that does only specialty beers, was allowed to have single serves. The beers have to be only available in a size greater than 12 ounces or less than 32 ounces. And the same provision was given to the Harris Theater in Gent. Those are the only two places, regardless of the type, that have been allowed single serves. Other than that, we have routinely prohibited single serves throughout the city.
So, this will prohibit single serves in this 7/11?
Yes.
Okay.
What are they going to do with someone around the corner?
I have not asked them what they would be doing with any of the stores around the corner, and other stores in the area.
You mean the one on Monticello?
Yeah. I understand they will have cameras outside.
I thought that was an office.
Yes. I know this was an issue that we've been discussing. I wasn't sure. Mr. Romine, who is a representative, is nodding his head, so I'll say yes.
Is that a new, is that new for them, to have cameras outside?
I believe they have cameras at some stores, but not necessarily all of them. Mr. Romine might be able to answer that question.
There is a program to install camera systems in all the stores. It hasn't been funded until recently.
Can we get you to agree to put those on all the stores in the Gent area?
They're planning to do that. I don't have the timing. It's scheduled for 2012.
Can we get something, something that would-
We'll try to get you something to write on that.
Would that be binding, that all those stores would have cameras outside? I think that might be a-
That's the plan, so I can try to get that.
I was under the impression that, when I heard that the 7/11 was coming, that that entire property would be demolished, and a 7/11 would be built similar to the one at Valentine Boulevard, Virginia Beach Boulevard, as opposed to this makeshift 7/11. They did an awful job at the Shell gas station at Princess Anne Road and Monticello Avenue. Because it was already zoned, we didn't have to say the thing, do the thing with it. But they took, they just overnight removed the Shell sign, put the 7/11 sign there, and it's just an awful, awful thing. And I would hate to see something not anywhere near the magnitude of the one on Valentine and Virginia Beach Boulevard go up there.
The issue you're dealing with is the property owner, is the owner of the wigs and things, if he plans on remaining in business.
Yeah, I mean, not a problem. I mean, I mean, so, who's, is he running the 7/11 or leasing the property to somebody to run this?
7/11 will be operating the other half of the building.
Okay. So, here, in essence, he'll be leasing that piece of property to 7/11?
Yes.
That one on it.
It's good to have the owner on the property.
Yeah, this guy wants to eat his cake and have it, too.
And he's also the property designer.
I have no idea.
Fortunately, if I'm wrong, but with the announcement of the Wells Fargo 7/11, it seems supported by everybody. Am I wrong in that?
Most of the people, there are a few people.
Okay. I just, it didn't seem like there was a lot of opposition to it.
Well, it is. I mean, it's a different neighborhood, and it's also a different, I mean, frankly, it's a different density.
I know they don't drive.
Yeah, they're not a lot of-
It's a convenience for the people.
And there are not a lot of 7/11s down there. I mean, they're looking for someplace to shop.
They would prefer a whole bunch.
Thank you.
We'd like to get just one more in.
Sure.
The Governor's School is timely.
Sure.
Mayor, member of council. It's my pleasure to be before you this afternoon, or evening. I'm providing an update on our progress with the Governor's School and their desire to consolidate various locations onto our Ramby Street. As you're aware, there are six cities and two counties that make up the participation in the Governor's School. They are funded by both the member jurisdictions, including the City of Norfolk, a proportionate share, as well as by the Commonwealth of Virginia. Their total budget is just above $2 million, at 2.3 million. There are some 350 students that are enrolled at the Governor's School. Like, you know that in the mornings, they're at their home school, school in their home jurisdiction, and in the afternoons, they are transported to various locations in Norfolk with the responsibility of their primary jurisdiction. The map at the lower left shows the various locations. As I said a moment ago, there are eight different locations throughout the city. As you look at the locations, you'll only count six. That's because there are three different locations right over by ODU. The Governor's School provided the city with a letter of intent back at the end of September. They gave us six months to work towards a plan to renovate the city's Monroe Building, which is a shot here from the interior. There's a rendering of what it would look like from the outside. One of the things that we did in partnership with Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority is to partner with NRHA to achieve a structural assessment and 35% design drawings that have allowed us to arrive at pretty competent information with regard to our ability to satisfy the Governor's School's desire. After the renovation of the Monroe Building, it'll be just under 54,000 square feet. Of that 54,000 square feet, 43,000 will be for the Governor's School, with the balance just under 11,000 being for the Virginia Stage Company. The Virginia Stage Company in this location is important as they support the operations of the Wells Theater from this location. And of course, the Governor's School would continue to lease the Wells Theater from the city. As I mentioned, our partnership with NRHA has allowed us to achieve the 35% design drawings, which you may be familiar with, is, of course, 35%, but allows us to get a good estimate for what the costs of renovations are. From the report recently received, we have been able to arrive at an estimated cost of $9.6 million for the complete building renovation. If you look at both the Governor's School and the Virginia Stage Company and the split there, it's based on the square footages for what they will actually be utilizing. But you see that with all costs included, this 9.6 million is what we believe the funding required would be to renovate the city's Monroe Building into a renovated Governor's School. Our proposed structure would have the city transferring ownership of the building to the NRHA to further the plan, including application or receipt of federal and state historic tax credits. I say receipt, because the city has actually taken the first step and initiated the process so that we can best keep on track with the timing needs of the Governor's School. NRHA would then establish the required entities to provide the leasing vehicle, if you will, between the Governor's School and the Virginia Stage Company. I mentioned earlier that on September 28, 2011, we received a six-month letter of intent, six months is tomorrow. So, at tomorrow's meeting with the superintendents and the Governor's School Board, we would like to present them with what we've found to date, including the drawing, structural analysis, and other documents regarding the renovations of the Monroe Building, which preliminary indications suggest that the, I apologize, I'll take a step back and say that the fourth bullet here, which shows the $360,000 per year, that number is what the Governor's School is currently paying in leases at the eight various locations. So, the goal is to provide the Governor's School with the benefit of having one location at or below what their current cost structure is. With the information provided on the previous slide, we believe that we will be able to provide the Governor's School with a lease that has the Monroe Building renovated, including the Virginia Stage Company for their support of the Wells Theater, with the Governor's School paying an annual lease at or below $360,000. Of course, the specifics of the lease payment would be derived from the financing that's put in place and the various components that would be the sources of funding. But the city is beginning the process by initiating the conveyance of the Monroe Building to NRHA, continuing to work with the Virginia Stage Company to relocate out of the Monroe Building by June 15. And that June 15 date is significant, because that's when we would need to begin our renovation activities to allow us to meet the Governor's School target of the end of August 2013, to occupy for the 2013-14 school year. And the NRHA proceeding with the necessary action to secure the financing in support of the renovation of the Monroe Building. And if anyone has any questions?
Yeah, terrible. I mean, the point is that you would take the rent roll that you're getting, and you would issue bonds and pledge that rent roll to satisfy the debt, which is, I mean, I don't know what that gets you, four and a half, I don't know what it gets you these days, but, and then the rest of it would come from tax credit. So, the city is not coming out of its own pocket to do this. But this is our building, and we're going to get a renovated facility. A couple of these floors are condemned, and this is a home run, because you get all 350 of these kids down there, with the staff, with the faculty. They're going to pay rent that'll satisfy the debt on the building, so we're not going into our own pocket. We create a lot of, not only economic, like energy down here, but a lot of really, you know, I mean, busy, high-energy arts types of events. It's a nice combination with the Stage Company and TCC there. I mean, I just, you know, it's, it's just perfect for us, in my opinion.
Is the Governor's School lease guaranteed by the state?
Going back to the first slide, 45% of the funding for the Governor's School is provided by the state. The mix of how much of their lease or the requirements for whether the local dollars need to pay the lease or the state dollars can pay the lease.
Individual school system plus this combination of the state.
Right. I don't think you will have the Commonwealth guarantee. The Governor's School is not able to bind the Commonwealth, which is why you ask for the participating jurisdictions, which fund the Governor's School to join in it. We're not anticipating the Commonwealth guaranteeing this.
What would happen if some of the school systems, which, you know, you hear rumors of are proposing to have their own Governor's School, and hence, they'd be pulling out and paying less funding?
What we are looking at is not issuing city bonds in support of this, but a bank loan that provides greater flexibility. But this last sub-bullet that shows that the Governor's School itself would be asked to sign on to the leases in support of this, as well as the individual jurisdictions, I believe that gives us a greater ability to ensure that the lease payment will be made, even if there are members that pull out. And if, in experience with regional organizations-
They pull out, it's just obligated under the law.
You adjust based on the remaining-
That's what you would seek to obtain.
And is the expectation that the Governor's School is in favor of this?
Yes.
I think this is great. We've come a long ways with this thing.
And that building right now, I mean, it's-
Is this a-
It's condemned, our own people have condemned our own buildings.
Is this a historic building in any way? Are there tax credits?
Yes, yes, they're all in state.
It's a part of that 9 million, because I know those floors don't line up with the windows. So, I knew that if you went in there, you had to take those floors out.
The Governor's School is also raising money. They've already gotten one gift of over a million. They've gotten another six-figure gift, because they're going to add their own, you know, work to the interior and their own classrooms, and I mean, it's-
Bottom of the, oh, hers bottom two. Is that the front that I just-
No, that's a different, no, that's a different building. And that's, we'd like to get that one, too. But that's, you know, that's gotten pretty expensive. But we would like to raise money to do that, not the city coming up.
And all the schools districts are in.
It's a great confluence of everything, Virginia Arts and-
We're going to go into closed session here just real quickly. Okay, we've got five minutes for that. Everybody's okay with this, right? I mean, it's a home run.
Honestly, do, you know, get everybody over.
Park is the city manager. He's trying to mend it in four cents. It's worth spending a four cents.